Here we are for the August 3rd, Hamilton County Council. If we could have a roll call, Madam Auditor.
It's Brad Beaver.
Here.
Fred Glenn.
Present.
Ken Alexander.
Present.
Amy Masalomani.
Present.
Sue Mackey.
Here.
Steve Nation.
Present.
Mr. Vice President, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Now, if you could rise for the invocation and the pledge. Pray in your own way. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a full agenda tonight. So let's get started. I'm going to open the public hearing. For a public hearing for county bridge improvement bond series 2022. Is anyone here to speak on? If you could please state your name.
Good evening, Council. Dennis Sodden, for the record, we're acting as bond counsel on this financing. I just wanted to mention this public hearing is for the bridge bonds. It's required by statute. We've got the first publication, legal notice from the papers. And if there's any questions at the council regarding the bonds or the public, I'm happy to answer them.
Did you put in here a list of the projects, or is this, I mean?
Yes, the list of the projects is in Exhibit A of the ordinance. It's close to the back, and it's the Pleasant Street Bridge Bonds, or the Pleasant Street Bridge Project and 146th Allisonville Road Project.
And Pleasant Street is, that's, we agreed to do that with this. Yes. So these projects are all, have all been identified in the major bridge projects. They were always assumed to be part of a funded through major bridge through a bond. We've combined these projects into a single bond issuance, and that's what's here today. Bond, the bond council was met with Mike Royder, as well as with the Highway Department, to make sure that we are meeting the needs. That was discussed at the last council meeting, and I don't think there's anything else that we need to say.
I should mention to Osprey Dieris with Bond Re-Consulting's here as well.
Is anyone here to speak in the public hearing? Closing the public hearing?
He loved doing that.
Fred only got you for four more months. Do I, ordinance number CC 07062022A, the ordinance for the major bridge bonds we just discussed, do I have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second.
Discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now, we're going to open a new public hearing for the adoption of appropriation ordinance CC 07062022-B.
Are you going to gavel it?
I'm not gaveling it.
Just to follow up, I know we introduced these at the last month's council meeting, but this hearing is just simply for an appropriation of the proceeds of the bonds, and it's required every time you have a financing that is payable from the source of property tax revenue, so you can actually spend the monies when the bonds are sold.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here in the audience to speak? Seeing no one, closing the public hearing. Ordinance number CC 07062022-B appropriation ordinance for the bond. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, who made the motion in second?
I did.
Motion.
There goes $47 million.
Always planned. All right. Next item on the agenda was approving the minutes from our July 6, 2022 meeting.
Still moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Public comments. Is anyone in the audience here to speak on items not currently on the agenda?
My name is Kathy Williams, and I would like for us this evening to share our hearts to Congresswoman Jackie Walorski that passed away, and her two staffers, and the other woman in the car. Jackie did not represent our area, but she was a great State House member and a great Congresswoman with a lot of passion and a lot of heart for Hoosiers, and I'd just ask us to keep her husband Dean and the other families in your heart.
We heard the sad news. I know that we've all been discussing that. It's tragic. Thank you. Seeing no one else, we should move on. Committee and officer reports. Vice President, the, I think we shared the email, and you saw the email from CJ regarding the combination of the BZA, North and South. I would ask that we, there is a need to adopt that as that combination will take place on Thursday at the second publication of that ordinance. And a motion that I would ask if anyone, if we could appoint or make the recommendation CJ did provide information here, then I would ask that we consider that tonight.
I think we should table. I'm not, I'm not opposed to letting him, join them together, but I think we ought to have input from Steve Schwartz. He's been on the planning commission for many years, and he's not here this evening.
So technically, we wouldn't have to table. It could just be put on the agenda for next month, being that it was just comments under Vice President. I'm not opposed to that.
Okay.
I mean, again, though, that's the consensus.
Before we, is CJ here, and maybe you want to come and speak? Yeah.
Well, the truth of the matter is, a table and motion stops all discussion.
If it has a second.
No second?
I haven't heard one.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure one of you did Robert's rules wrong right there.
Am I, is Donna Robin, is that?
It hasn't even been added to the agenda, though.
Yeah, it's not there.
CJ, if you want to, if you could walk us through the process and our role as far as from appointing this position and the reason for its need.
Sure. I appreciate the time tonight for this consideration. The Planning Commission and the County Commissioners very recently passed the new Unified Development Ordinance, and part of that ordinance that they reviewed and approved consolidates from two BZAs, the North and the South, down to one, because we just simply don't need that much coverage anymore, because we don't have the territory we once had. So that was unanimous from Plan Commission and the Commissioners. So we have a BZA hearing coming up the end of this month, and that's why I was requesting for the appointment to go ahead and be made. I'm asking you for your appointment. I'm asking the Commissioners for theirs, as well as the Plan Commission for theirs. These are new appointments, but they're, but we're selecting people that have been serving for a long time on the BZA.
If we don't make that appointment this evening, how do proceedings move on at the next meeting?
We'll just be down one person.
Why not?
What's the big deal about appointing this person tonight? One more time? Who are you talking to?
You.
I think we should get Schwartz's input. He's served on the Plan Commission. Do you, do you know any of the appointments?
This isn't the Plan, it's the BZA.
I know.
Okay.
I do. Anybody else? So I think we should get Schwartz's input before we make an appointment.
I said on the Planning Commission as well, Mark Harebrandt, I did talk to Steve Schwartz. He's in agreement with CJ's recommendations.
Yeah, I'm not.
Okay.
Motion to table it.
Let's have a table.
It's not table.
There's nothing table.
Is there a motion?
It's not on the agenda.
Oh, that's right.
I'm making a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
What are you approving? Adding to the, adding to the, to the agenda.
Yes. All those in? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
No, it's on the agenda.
Now, we'll take, is there a motion to take action on it?
Motion to approve his appointment.
Second.
Who is the appointment?
We got to get this.
The appointment is, was sent out, and...
It's in the email, and...
It's in the email, yeah, I'm looking for it.
It was communicated in the...
It's Adam Zeller.
Yeah.
For the regular appointment, and Gerald Kirby for the alternate.
Correct, thank you.
That would be the council's appointments?
Yes, that...
Those are our, I believe.
That's your appointment.
They were our, and, and...
Current.
They are current, and they're current appointments currently.
Not by the council.
Yeah, they're not a current council appointment, but they are currently BZA members.
The, okay. All right.
You know, I know I've been a little bit removed here, but if we wanted this thing appointed, I would figure we at least had a few members that were familiar with these two appointments here, and we don't have that.
My understanding is that, and I do not know other, neither, either of the two gentlemen, my understanding is that they've been long-term serving members of the BZA and Planning Commission, or just BZA?
Just BZA.
Just BZA. And then when they consolidated, these two individuals live in the areas where they has the most geographic need for representation, so therefore, they were the likely, the logical choices for, or the one for us, our appointment.
For growth.
For the, for the growth, so.
Well, I think, yeah, and I think all that's been shared, at this point, I would, we either look to table that for another day, or we get a motion to approve and vote. Do we have that motion already?
I made the motion.
Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Real quick, I mean, I just say that next time we do this, well, maybe that's because Steve isn't here. Somebody needs to have familiarity with the appointments, to be able to at least speak on behalf of the person, know their names.
This is, this is an unique situation. Steve has, Steve has offered information that Commissioner Harebrandt has brought forward.
Well, and in fairness, they did provide us the information earlier. I know it's like not, you know, like 24 hours ago, but you still have the opportunity to do diligence. It isn't, but...
Okay.
And normally, it wouldn't...
I know both these gentlemen, they're fine.
Right.
That's not how this works.
Right, and normally, it wouldn't work this way. We're just kind of under the gun because the new ordinance goes into effect tomorrow.
It's not our business.
Right, I understand.
The beauty is, is we're going to have an appointment process that we're going to talk about here in a bit.
Leading into that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right, moving on. Thank you. I have no other items. Highway.
You did not meet.
Did not meet, but we, I believe they communicated to the members separately, and we have items to discuss later on the agenda. Finance.
We did have a finance meeting, and it was a general discussion about how we're paying for all our different projects. It went pretty well. We still are working under the same plan that we've had for months to step up the major bridge a little bit at a time. And we also discussed community corrections, but that won't need any action for another year or so, but it did get brought up. Ralph has indicated his expenses are exceeding his income, and he'll be okay for 2023, but after that, we'll probably need additional county funds to continue his work out there.
I believe the other, well, the only other item I would say is that there was a desire amongst the finance committee to reconvene with the Commissioners to discuss major projects and get an update on several of the items, which I believe I sent an email out to everyone earlier looking for your, your availability for that week, so that we can publish a, a meeting. Okay. All right. Personnel.
We did not meet, but we did have a poll, and those items are on the agenda this evening.
Thank you. Miscellaneous? Anyone?
Going, going, going.
Okay. We have no unfinished business, so we'll go to, would anyone care to motion to untable the fund 8950 ARPA transfer?
Not this month due to length of our, of our meeting, but there'll be more information at the next meeting.
Moving on to new business. Do I have a motion to approve the vendor claims?
Still moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. All right, and B, introduction of ordinance CC 08032022-A. This is an ordinance for a bond for multiple projects, and it's just an introduction at this point. That information is in your packet. Is there anyone that would like to speak on behalf of this, or the information's already carried in there? Okay.
This is for the issue in the ordinance. What I'm understanding is the fairgrounds.
This is not just the fairgrounds, it's two other projects as well.
Including the fairgrounds.
Including the fairgrounds.
Good evening, council members. Again, Dennis Sodden with those McKinnon Evans, bond counsel on this project, and this is for introduction only. As Council President mentioned, this will be subject to two separate public hearings before it's finally adopted. This authorizes the issuance of general obligation bonds to fund six separate projects that you'll see kind of outlined in the second warehouse clause of the ordinance, and then also more particularly described in Exhibit A, that there's Pleasant, Pleasant Street Office Building Improvement, HHW Expansion Project, 4H Bicentennial Pavilion Project, 4H Lama Farm Project, 4H Mainland Sword Building Project, now 4H Exhibition Center Project. It authorizes up to $22 million of bonds, payable over a 20-year term, semi-annual principal and interest payments. And again, this is for introduction only, and I'm happy to answer any questions. And I will mention as well, Osprey Dieris is available, as well, the financial questions.
So as, as councils aware, we, I sent out an email with the recommendations for the joint meeting, and you will have noticed that that, one of the items was to discuss major projects as well as improvements that incorporate several of the projects identified in the fairgrounds. Thank you. Okay. Item two, ordinance CC 08032022-B. This is the appropriation ordinance, an introduction. I think this is your last time.
I have to say, again, this is similar to the bridge bonds. We have to have an appropriation for the bond proceeds, and it's just rank reduction, and it will also have its own separate public hearing.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on. We had so much fun with the last appointment. We have another one, board appointment for Hamilton East Public Library. This is a board, a position that we filled halfway through a term, and as you'll see in your packet, Tiffany has been recommended by Edra Waterman to continue in that service, and that appointment is on the agenda tonight. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Who's Edra, Edra, who's?
She's the executive director.
I know who Edra is. Who is this appointment right here?
Tiffany is who came in May or April?
Second, so we can discuss.
Yeah.
April or May, when we were going through the library appointments and heavy discussion, and she spoke to us maybe two minutes ago. I think you were here.
Yeah, I've had nothing but positive.
Michael's here as well.
Yeah, she's represented.
Yeah, I just, you know, one of these library board appointments, usually in the past, you just, you know, council member brings them, you just vote them through, but with everything going on, and this library in particular, I just want, you know, just want to know, so who's recommending this person on this?
I would, I would recommend.
We all had gone through the...
He's good.
Was he?
You might not have been here, but...
Yeah, he was, because it was, there was another appointment. He had, he had recommended someone else at the time.
I mean, because the, the executive director, Edra, that doesn't, I'd rather hear, that doesn't mean anything to me, to be honest, so.
No, no, I mean, obviously, I've spoken to her at length when we brought her before council in April or May when she was appointed to fill out the remaining time.
Okay.
And Laura Alderlein, who is on the school board in Noblesville, and the appointment from them to the Hamilton East Public Library, she mentioned to me yesterday what an excellent job Tiffany's doing. So she's qualified.
All right.
Doing a great job.
I agree with you, the director.
Yeah. Motion, motion's been made. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, motion passed. Okay. Resolution CC 0832022-101. This is a resolution for council recommending 2023 property tax levy limits for our taxing units.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Someone say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Don't, don't go above your six-year non-farm personal income factor. That's what we're recommending.
Yes.
And nobody knows what that means.
Uh, resolution CC zero eight zero three two zero two two zero two dash A, uh, resolution concerning the purchase of real estate for the Clare Knotts drainage projects.
So moved.
Second.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of this project? Any discussion? All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passed. All right. All right, next item is the master plan silos, uh, at thirty-seven. Susan Peterson. Susan, uh, we have an extremely long agenda item, uh, agenda, so if you, uh, how, how long are you thinking?
Five minutes.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay.
Yep?
Good evening. My name is Susan Peterson, um, and I'm with the Porter Extension Service here in Hamilton County. I'm the county extension director, and this evening we're here, um, to share our vision, um, our master plan report, and phase one design proposals, um, for the Hamilton County Fairgrounds. So over the years, um, we've had some upgrades at the fairgrounds and maintenance updates, um, but it's been more than twenty-five years since the county's last large investment there. Our accolades to our county maintenance staff for all that they've been able to do, but we are very excited with the potential of what could be on our site. I wanna just begin, um, with sharing with you real quickly, and I don't know, you have this in front of you, or we've got the reports.
It's showing, this is impressive.
Okay, if you can see it. Um, just a list of names. Um, I just wanted you to see, this is amazing team, um, that have been working on this. I want you to see their names. Um, most of them have met with you, they've shared their stories with you, um, but they have been working for more than six years on this vision of what, um, we could do at the fairgrounds. Uh, many of them are members of our extension board, um, come from all kinds of professions, but they're sharing their time and their talents, and that, and we just really appreciate that. Um, and I wanna point out that majority of them are volunteers, that they are serving in a volunteer role, and they have such passion for this project, and it's, it's really, um, not just for the project, but just like you, they really care about the county and, um, the future of where we live, and they have just invested so much. So our partnership, we also wanna say with, um, tourism and Veritas has just been invaluable. Um, and then the recent, um, bringing on of Musset Nichols to help us through the process has been amazing. So I wanna thank you to each of you for your support to getting us to this point, and I wanna introduce now, um, the rest of two present. I'm John Jackson, um, Tim Schwam from Musset Nichols, Dave Rainey from Veritas, and our extension board president, I'm Jane Syte, so.
Yeah, I appreciate that, that's good. Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. John Jackson here, Director of Architecture at Musset Nichols, and, uh, Tim Schwam back here,主管 as well. Um, you guys will all email the copy of the, uh, master plan report. I'm not gonna go through a whole lot of detail today, but I'm just gonna kind of run through real quick, just a quick, brief, uh, Cliff Notes version. Here's the master plan on the screen. Um, we started by taking, uh, all the information that they have been working on for the past five, six years, collecting that information together, uh, going through it. We worked on building three master plans originally, uh, focused with the life, uh, life sciences committee, talked with the commissioners, brought up to one, uh, conceptual site plan. We workshopped that across, uh, ten different committees, each of them gave their feedback, a whole host of them from the mayor, uh, uh, Chris Jengson, um, city engineer, tourism, and all the different extension committees as well. Got it down to one final master plan, and that is what we're presenting today. Really first and foremost, though, our first chance, the first charge we were given by the commissioners was, does this fit on the site? And, uh, we can say wholeheartedly, the program that was presented to us fits on this site. Uh, it, it fits for the current and future programming, uh, all buildings, rented space, uh, square footages, and it has plenty of parking. Master plan really kind of focuses around large sort of green space. You can see up here on the screen, all the buildings that surround it, and then all the parking then is around the outside, including the road, so we're trying to create a large community, open green space, protected to the public, and really increases safety, uh, to the site. And currently, there are votes that drive through the, the fairgrounds, um, and the event going on, such that it's fair, it poses a safety risk, so. Safety first, and then each of the four nodes, we looked at this as nodes, each node is self-supporting, with parking, restrooms, and its own entrance egress. The four nodes, the bicentennial pavilion and the exhibition center on the upper left, the animal barns, the show arena on the upper right, everything, uh, the equestrian on the lower left, and, I'm sorry, lower, lower right, and then the, uh, llama barn and the, the green house on the lower left. Again, each node is self-supporting, all the parking, it is, is in itself, uh, that's how we look at that. So, uh, really, um, it comes all down together. First thing we're looking at is phase one, and I think that's, uh, that's the most important part right now as far as time goes, and the reason is, uh, the Pleasant Street expansion, uh, requires demolition of the Winks Building. Uh, that losing the Winks Building, um, we need to upgrade the llama barn to move that, uh, programming space. We're gonna add restrooms and a kitchen to the llama barn, upgrade the fixtures and finishes in that space, so that they have an equal, so that the rental spaces that happened in the Winks Building is now brought over to the llama barn, and, and again, is an equal space. We also don't lose storage space for all the maintenance and buildings and grounds. Uh, building ground, storage bar needs to be built. Those items need to get designed and starting, uh, last yesterday in order to get the materials on order, get the construction started, and get those buildings done, open before the fair next year, because demolition is scheduled for August to September when the Pleasant Street expansion begins. So that really is the, the risk of, of why we wanna get going on phase one. Uh, the phase one development schedule is on the screen, and, and really the other item, and the big item here is the site development drainage as well. Uh, we need to understand the elevations to put the new buildings at, we need to get the drainage fixed on the site, uh, and we need to have all that information before we start putting foundations for any of those. Um, at the end, master plan will increase program and usage space three hundred percent, and increase the rental rooms from seven to thirteen, and we can have not just three compared events, but then we can bump that to five. Phase one, uh, which is the first fifteen that's being asked for, replaces rental facilities lost due to the Pleasant Street expansion. Exhibition Center gets its updates and building maintenance that, that's now due. We can expand, extend life for that building for another twenty-five years, bring it up to today's standards, and then with the show arena and the expansion of the exhibition center, we actually can double the amount in, in the rented space. So that is kind of a quick overview of what the, uh, phase one does as far as the full master plan, and I'm gonna have Jane set up here real quick, and, uh, explain to you, uh, thank everyone, uh, why they're so passionate about the plan.
Thank you. I'm Jane Syte, President of the Hamilton County Extension Board. Thank you for the time and your support. Um, we really look at this project, we, we've looked at keeping it on the fairground side now. We've talked to the city, we've talked to many people throughout the last six years, our own stakeholders. Um, we will have fundraising of our own to look to fund some of this project as well. Those, um, committees and meetings with big companies and big collaborative partners, including banks, Reynolds, um, Connor Prairie, et cetera, have already taken place, and once we get this approved, and we have something to take then, and work on our own fundraising. I just wanna conclude by saying that we feel like this is a shining example of the standards of Hamilton County that we're bringing to you, that this is not a road project, which is exciting in its own way, but this is a structural project, right? That is a, a gathering place for our county, and Hamilton County deserves this. We have the, we have the quality of people and the talent and resources here, so we appreciate your support and anything you can give us, especially in starting phase one.
Question, question for you. You just said, uh, fundraising. Do you guys have a goal in mind of what that'll be, private fundraising?
We, um, we are meeting with Connor Prairie, uh, this next week, and we might be doing some collaborative joint fundraising with them, and after that, we'll have a, a, a number for you, so...
So you don't have a number in mind?
I guess a couple million. Uh, I mean, our first goal was five million, we probably are gonna have to back off that. We would like to have our new show arena totally funded by a partner, and so that would not be coming from you at all. It would be kind of with maybe lifetime naming rights or something like that, so we're still in the, the gist of all of that, but we are starting.
So with the twenty-six and a half million that was projected as cost for phase one, and fifteen million, if I'm not mistaken, would be the request from council, and a couple million in your raising, there's a gap. So do we know where the gap would come from?
Well, is it twenty-six or is it twenty-three million? I'm sorry. I was thinking, John, you have the numbers, is that right?
Yeah, yeah, so the, the number, the twenty-six million that was in the packet, that was before we, we shoved around a couple of things. The big one in there is, uh, site. Uh, we're looking for four, four, four to five million from the ARPA funds to work on site drainage. Build a, build a pond, get the main trunk lines in, improve the, uh, equestrian arena, hit some of the sites, and those, those items are, are not very, they're not very sexy. No one really thinks about drainage, but they're big dollar items. So the fifteen covers, the fifteen covers the, uh, bicentennial pavilion gardens, the maintenance building, the llama barn upgrades, uh, the, um, and the exhibition center upgrades and expansion. The show arena is that, that piece that's right there, estimated right now would be four to five million. Again, we, we are just at the very, very highest levels, and we just did it on square footage cost using twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two numbers with the projected, uh, with the projected inflation rate.
Now, there, there was an, I believe we were working towards an ROI on, on the different facilities in phase one. Uh, you know, uh, tourism had, had done some work to sort of, is, do you have a status on where we are with that, Brenda, that you might be able to share?
Thank you. That, um, ROI analysis is practically complete. Um, I have a portion of it here tonight. Um, if you'd like to see it, it's just a, it's just some, um, attendance data and location data. Um, it'll be done by Friday. Be happy to distribute that to all of you. It was conducted by Hyundai Strategic Partners, and it looked at, um, the phase one space and what that would generate in an ROI, and I'm pleased to announce that the ROI will cover the additional operating cost of the new facility, so the anticipated growth in costs will be covered by the growth in revenue that can be produced out of the facility. If we were able to also recapture commission off of food and beverage and alcohol sales, then I think they, think it could break even, which right now, I think it's a, it's a combined about a half million dollar, um, operating cost in various pots on your budget, so, which I think really is a bargain, given it's a space that attracts almost a hundred and fifty thousand visitors a year, and fifty percent of the space is community, community space, community using the space. Um, as we anticipated, weekday demand and conference demand, which with the elevated, um, improvements, are the ones where the biggest ROI can happen, you know, it's full on weekends. I mean, it's really full. The additional space will allow for more tetrising of events as projected. It's always nice when your ideas are validated, I just want everybody to know that. And it will, and I said it'll keep up with itself, which I quite frankly was surprised about. Now, that's debt services aside. That's just in general operating costs. Uh, the one thing that they did say is, um, it, it will grow to a certain point, and it, 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 uh, demand will exceed supply at that location. That's the only thing that they are concerning in that document, but they do say that if you are, or if you're good with the additional space, and if you're good with, um, it'll, and they also note that pretty much it's gonna bring it up to today's standards. This is not a, this is not a futuristic investment. This is a, this is a catch-up after twenty-five-year investment, but it's a good one, and they really, actually, really liked the, uh, master plan and thought really highly of the positioning of all the buildings and everything, and thought the ROI would really be improved and the, the ideas of making them into nodes. Um, they are gonna make a couple of suggestions on like pre-function space versus function space. But I do, I do have that full report, and it should be done in a couple of days. They also would be willing to come and, uh, workshop with you and, um, life sciences committee, if you'd like to have a conversation about their report.
One of the items that I would want for the joint meeting that has been identified has been to discuss the, uh, the fairgrounds, uh, projects and the master plan as a whole. You know, I, I think one of my, my, um, my concerns is, is that we have a fifteen million dollar, uh, you know, desire for up, upfront projects in phase one, and who, how is the gap filled to finish phase one? And how are the future projects funded? And that, that, that's a real big concern. And, and I wanna make sure that, that this body, as well as the commissioners, are on board and, and have full understanding of, of your, uh, of your, um, report, so that we understand not just what phase one does, but from a global perspective, go looking forward.
No, I think, I think it's a valid point. Um, I do think it's heartening to know that the money invested will actually... I mean, I really think, I really feel good about the revenue opportunity and the revenue return. I do, I do think there's a realistic, um, understanding that, that, that space is confined, right? I mean, that's the only thing about it, but I think, and the only thing you could do would be to go vertical and, you know, later, later on down the road. But there's no doubt that the investment will, um, basically cover your additional operating costs, which I thought that was a really good sign.
Thank you. I, I, I know that we have, uh, items later in the agenda to discuss, but if there's anything else in closing?
I got a, I got a question for Brenda. Did you, um, will it pay off, when you say operating expenses, is this, are you projecting? I mean, I know we've had some disagreements, but I do have confidence. I know you're gonna bring a real analysis. No, I mean, seriously, you will, so I, I feel comfortable asking you this.
Yeah, sure.
So will it, are you just talking about operating?
Yeah.
And, and plus, what about like, um, paying off the, the...
Debt service? No.
Okay.
Now, if, if we can, so I sent them back to the drawing board and said, let's recap, 'cause wherever I have worked, when you've had catering, you have commission back, you know, I mean, you have commissions, you, you accept a ten percent commission back on catering sales, and especially now that the alcohol policy's been revised, they feel then it would be a net profit off of operating, and that would go towards covering some of the fifteen million dollars in debt service.
And you, i- i- so, I mean, the, you'd get liquor licenses over there, that type of stuff would be included, is that what you're saying?
Mostly you would probably use the catering licenses. You know, the ca, you wouldn't have to necessarily have a liquor license there. You just have to have a licensed caterer.
Okay. And I, I, one more question for you. Um, so, some people have talked about, there's, there's much value in that land given the direction that Noblesville's going. Have you had any type of analysis done?
No, actually, Fred, I think that's a really good point. Um, uh, we originally had earmarked this money to look at, with the city of Noblesville, to look at that corner, you know, and look at what, what this investment would, would return in for the city, 'cause I strongly believe that whole corner needs to be redeveloped as part of the, or, you know, rethought through. You're, you're going to need, you, you could really use a hotel there, and with thirty-seven and Pleasant Street, a hotel beyond the quality in, and, and when you're, but, but with thirty-seven and Pleasant Street, the opportunity, you know, to really rethink that, that whole node and, and really understand its use would be really important. But then when the commissioners ask us, and you, ask us to look at an ROI analysis, we diverted that money, but we would be happy. I have had conversations with, um, Sarah Reed and Mayor Jensen about, about putting a master plan in place as to see how this improvement would impact the area, you know what I mean?
It would just be good to see something side by side. I mean, I may not even be here by the time it's done, but I mean, I, and I think that, that, like I said, I, I did mean that as a compliment earlier. I think that you could produce something for us to look at, you know, that we can be confident in the numbers.
I think this study's gonna be, I think this study is really well-conducted. I just, I really want you to know that. I feel really confident about it. And these guys will tell you that there's not been a meeting that I haven't been in two and six years. That's why I'm just laughing, and which I've mentioned this very thing, Fred, so I think that you are right. Um, it's, it's been my, it has to be done in context of a larger vision, I believe.
Okay, okay.
But that's just...
Any other, any other comments?
I have just one comment. Thank you for all your work. I know, I'm the liaison to the extension board and the four-H council, and I've seen firsthand how much work and passion they have and thought they've put through, through everything, and I just wanna share with the public as well, this, the, those fairgrounds aren't just for the, the paid entities and even the four-H council to use. The, the county operations uses that, some of that facility, and the perfect example was we had the COVID vaccine clinic, uh, that took up the whole exhibition center, and thank goodness we had that available to us as a county property. So we, a lot of the time is not billed to anyone that's being used, but the county government's using it, and also our community partners, like, um, the Good Samaritan Network does their, their, um, um, holiday, um, clothing and food distribution there, and that's important to have those facilities available to our community partners. Just wanted to say that.
Susan, do you have anything else you wanted to add in closing?
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Moving on, item G, council appointee application process demo. So Heather, if you're in the audience, you want to come forward, that'd be great. So I just want to say that I've had the, I've had the pleasure to work with the ISS team on this project. Heather Bennett has been, and her team have been outstanding to work with. This has been a passion project of mine to try and figure out a better way to communicate opportunities for, for the appointee application process so that maybe we can bypass some of the craziness like we just had today in this meeting. And putting a process in place that allows for transparency, captures information for people as they go through, and just really excited. So if you want to go ahead and take over, I just thank you for your time.
Thank you. Again, my name is Heather Bennett, project manager with the ISS department. This evening I have Jasmine Hazelbaker with me as well, also representing Chris Martin's with the ISS department. Also want to make sure that I give credit to Diana Cleveland and John Wardlow, who also helped with this project. So in essence, what we are, what we were slated to develop would be a webpage that would give all of the information to potential candidates looking for serving the community on a board or commission. And then an application process that they can submit their information and their resume, pertinent information. And then also a SharePoint page where folks like you could be able to review all of those submissions. So we have a brief presentation. Going to hand it over to Jasmine, who helped develop the SharePoint, I'm sorry, helped develop the website pages to give a little information on that.
Yeah, so basically, we have this landing page that will give you kind of a brief synopsis of what the county's looking for in a candidate. And then if you scroll down, I won't scroll too fast. We have kind of separated all of the current boards that we've been given into categories so that you can see based on what group you might be interested in. So I'm going to go ahead and show you into one of the categories. And on this page, you'll see all of the different boards listed with their designated Indiana codes, what sort of term length that they would be serving, a brief description of what they would be doing on that board, and any related documentation to that board. And this is also where you would find the application that you want to submit to. So all you have to do is click this button. It will take you to the Cognito form that we've used, and it will actually auto-populate that first board and committee field for you. I've taken liberty of already filling one out so that we can take a look at it. Something I will note is some of the boards have different positions you can apply for. So depending on what field you select, this positions option may come up or not. And so as you fill this out, there are some fields that are required, some fields that are not. We do ask for different information like education, political party, county counselor, things like that. You can attach a resume or letter of recommendation, if you would like, in PDF format. And there is a second page to this application that takes some demographics for Title VI information.
So if you want to mind real quick.
Yeah.
So that first page was what we had worked on. And if you remember the application process that we actually did for the Hamilton East previously, it was kind of taking that, that Word document and putting into a form that we could do digitally. And Chris's team and Heather, they did a wonderful job on this. Obviously, the BZA one's going to have to change, but we already talked about that today. But one of the things that I thought was really interesting is they were able to, this, as they fill it out, it gets emailed out to people. We had some people test it. And as we were working through this, 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 this other issue came up as far as how we're collecting demographics information and things of that nature. And if you wanted to kind of share why we're having to do that, what that, what that means. Heather, if you don't mind.
Sure. So for Title VI, that has helped, Stephen Rushworth kind of was, was, that had put in charge of making sure that we are compliant as a county with Title VI. I can't claim to be an expert at all about it. But essentially, what it means is that we need to make sure that we have representation on our boards and committees that reflects the population of our county. So we need to make sure that we're reaching, you know, populations that, make sure that we have a diverse boards and commissions.
And so I think part of this is, is that we're going to collect the information. They can choose to fill it out or not. It's not something that I think comes to us for us to review. It's more of just collecting data so that they can fill out the reports as needed. Is that accurate?
Yes. So we'll, we'll show that when we get to the SharePoint list. Absolutely. So I'll let Jasmine finish what it looks like for the submission process for, again, someone in the county, a citizen that is interested in submitting to be a candidate for a board or commission.
Yeah, so just real quick, after you fill out this application, once you submit, you will get a, kind of a confirmation screen, and this will link you back to the landing page if you wanted to apply for something else, or if you're just more interested in looking into other boards. You will also receive, as a public user, an email that will give you all of the entry details that you had entered to your application, that application in a PDF format, and any sort of PDFs that you included. So if you included a resume or letter of recommendation, you will also get all of that documentation back to you in an email just to confirm what you did include. And then all of this information also goes into the SharePoint end that Heather's going to show you around.
Yeah, so the citizen has taken their time to be able to submit their information, their application, their information. Again, the attachments as needed. So then this SharePoint page would be used, again, by the council. We're also extending this perhaps to the commissioners. So essentially, anyone who wants to be able to serve on a county board or commission. From here, you would be able to see an applicant list. And for purposes of this demonstration, we did go ahead and give kind of a limited list here. But you can see here, you would be able to have a snapshot of the applicant information. We can give you a list of statuses. You can see those that are newly submitted as you review those. Make sure that they are qualified candidates. You can set a status for that so that, again, as we come to a meeting for discussion, you can discuss all of the qualified candidates. We have a status that you could set if they are appointed or recommended for appointment. And then also a status if, again, they did not qualify. So we might be declining their application.
Some of the boards, and by the reason why it takes on the information, like their political affiliation, is they have to be either filled by a Democrat or Republican. In some areas, it's the, it's the demographic, it's where they live. And so we can basically, as people apply, we can say, well, you don't qualify because of X. But this, this allows us to capture that information.
Right. And again, for Title VI, we want to make sure that we are capturing all of this information so that we can make sure that we are, again, representing our county and everyone who has applied. Again, you can go in and also change your view so that you can see how many, you know, if you're interested in a certain board appointment, you can change your view so you can see all the applicants specific to that board or commission that you're looking to fill. And then, again, with, we can make, this is, again, built by our ISS department. So again, kudos to our team who built this out. So we have flexibility that we can make changes that we, based on your recommendations, to make it very usable for you.
Yeah, that's real good.
Thank you.
Good idea, by the way. Amazing, and you guys did a great job. This is good.
Just a quick question. So these appointments, the view that you could see who applied for each position, is that we, only we can see it? The commissioners, other staff members?
So that is yet to be decided. So we need to make sure, again, this was just very recently introduced, that the commissioners would also have use of this kind of application process for the boards and commissions that they appoint. And so we're trying to figure out if it makes sense to aggregate those together. So we have one reporting tool to say, these were, these are all the citizens that have requested to be on a board or commission. But we definitely would need to look through the permissions. And we can narrow those out to only those that should be viewing that information.
Well, so, thank you. The opportunity to move this live, what you're seeing right here looks like it's a live document, but it's only for people within the county government. The idea and thought I would have is as we are looking into budgets season, that this is something we could push out live at that point in time. We have some tweaks that we could do. But then as we go to appointments by the end of the year, that we could have this reporting back to us, people that are interested. And I'm certain we could probably get some information going out to people that this is available.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
It's awesome.
Thank you so much for your effort and time. This meeting was wonderful. All right. All right. Moving on, item twelve, additional appropriations. We have a fund, one thousand county general requesting one million one hundred and fifty-seven nine hundred and forty. Did I miss that? Okay, I see. Opening a public hearing for additional appropriations. Number A is for fund one thousand county general requesting one million one hundred and fifty-seven thousand nine hundred and forty. Do I have any motion? We'll move on to number one. Commissioners additional. There's three items in this, and I think if you wouldn't mind explaining that one of the three has a correction to be made. Is that correct?
Correct.
We're doing a bit of a motion or something.
Which one are you?
We're at number, number one.
So the correction would be, there was an application that had been in for eight hundred and fifty-five thousand. That is actually going to be two hundred and eighty-seven thousand four hundred and fifty.
My gosh, one hundred and fifteen thousand.
Yeah.
Eight hundred and fifty-five thousand, that's one hundred and seventy-two thousand. Do you want to look at these individually?
Yes.
Or together?
They're a different line, I mean, different.
Can I, can I make that? Donna Robb, is that okay to make that motion?
Yeah.
Do I have a motion for that?
Look, I'm individual.
Individually? Don't need to? Okay. Well, looking at the first item, that is the one hundred and fifteen thousand, and this is for capital improvements for the construction and management services for the fairgrounds. Do I have a motion? I'd like to, I'd like to.
I'll motion to table so we can have further discussion at our joint session with the commissioners before we move forward.
Okay, thank you.
I think that's, we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Item two, this is, this is two hundred and eighty-seven thousand four hundred and fifty. And this is also, if I'm not mistaken, providing the same financing for that same project?
Correct. It is for the finance and for the fairgrounds.
So that's, that's the eight fifty-five?
Yes, that was a reduction because of ARPA.
Yeah.
It's further in the agenda.
Do I have a, are we going to table this one like we did last time?
Yeah.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
No, it's motion to table. All right. Moving on to the third item. This is the rail line maintenance, project one hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. This is funding to allow reconstruction and repairs over State Road nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
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 In the next meeting, I'm going to be bringing to you any double staffed, coupled positions over two people retiring and their supervisory positions. Just letting you know now that I'm going to put in for next month for that, while I'm up there, just to let you know.
Okay, thank you.
And will you be doing the same thing for the six hundred and fifty thousand for ARPA? Are you going to table that as well?
When we get to that, we'll make that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we get to, I mean, if we're, some type of recommendation for an analysis of the second part of the thing we discussed? If we're going to be getting that meeting with commissioners and discussing that property?
Let's, let's talk about that later in the agenda. Moving on to item number two.
Mr. President, I'd make a motion to combine items two through seven related to the one forty-four amendments and the planning appropriation.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
That's fine. We're going two, two through seven. So, so tell me what the first one is.
That's for the, it's related, you'll see it again in item, sorry, we've got so many.
This is the Prevail Celebration and Hope table sponsorship. County's participating, is committed to participate in that project, and this is their, Fred, you were.
Yeah. You go to the website for Prevail, there was, all four cities were participated in this. They were all table sponsors.
Is it an event?
Yes.
An event's happening?
Yeah.
Yeah, and it was a part of where we talked, you know, when we appropriated money last year to council.
No, I have a problem. When is it?
I know, it's on the website, it's in the, I don't have the date.
I'll send it to you.
So we have the motion, and we've approved to combine them. We have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Fund one-one-one-nine clerk record perpetuation fund requesting one thousand five hundred. I, I know that there was, we did not have a sponsor on that. I met with and understand its needs, so I'm acting as the sponsor for this. This is, Kathy, you're here, you want to step forward and maybe share? This is item B.
Okay.
Which, let's see, I'll try one.
Second.
Get to the right one.
Did we get a motion second on this?
Yes, we did.
So it says to pay overtime for Galen something. What's it say? Can you read that?
We have a perpetuation fund that has five hundred thousand dollars in it. I need fifteen hundred dollars to pay Galen for overtime for the last year.
Oh, I, I don't have an issue with that. I just couldn't read the second word. I thought there was something else you were writing there. Okay.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Fund eleven sixty, identification of security protection requesting thirty-five thousand.
So moved.
Second.
And if you want clarity, it's regarding.
What is the short story on that?
There was an appropriation that was missed during last budget cycle. And so it has to do, it covers the services and so are recorded for documents from the one year.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on. Fund eleven seventy-six dash period one-one-seven-three MVH restricted transfer for a million dollars, one hundred and ninety-seven thousand four hundred and fourteen ninety-seven dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? Discussions?
Just moving.
Yeah.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Fund eleven eighty-nine recorders record perpetuation fund requesting seventy-five thousand.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Fund twelve twenty-two communications, there's three one forty-four amendments.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on. Fund twenty-five hundred, period two five oh six, user fee fund jury pay reduction for seventy-eight thousand sixty-seven.
Reduction of appropriation.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nobody's going to oppose a reduction, right?
I know, I think so. Fund forty-eight oh seven, non-reverting computer maintenance requesting eight hundred and fifty-three thousand eighteen dollars.
So moved.
Second.
This is the switch refresh project that is from the, to use the computer maintenance non-reverting fund in order to conduct that refresh.
Any other questions?
Yeah, no. I don't understand any of this IT stuff, so.
Oh, Fred.
All right. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Aye, fund forty-nine oh seven highway coat one forty-four amendment.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item J, grant funds.
Mr. President, if possible, I'd make a motion to combine one through five and eight through ten.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right.
Mr. President, I will make a motion to approve one through five and eight through ten.
Second.
All right. All those in, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Item six, fund eighty-nine fifty ARPA transfer for six hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, so we put that money aside to pay for drainage. Now we're shifting it over to pay for the master plan, is that generally? to pay for the master plan, is that generally?
That's generally.
We'd like to talk about it with the, with the master plan.
So it'll be that.
Yeah.
And what, we're adding some from County General to that also?
That was earlier.
Do we have a motion to approve?
No, we do not.
What?
Well, we don't have a motion to approve, so we can't discuss.
We have, we have a motion to approve? Do we have a motion to do anything?
I'll motion to table to bring this up in the discussion. That is the bigger part of the conversation that I indicated with the joint session that we are having with regards to the fairgrounds.
All right. Second.
All right, moving on. Fund 8952 21, period 023 Emergency Rental Assistance Program Appropriation.
So moved.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay.
I don't know if I know it's.
So we have a second on the ERAP program. Any questions or discussions on this?
Is this the last of this program?
Well, it is an item that we've identified for our joint meeting to discuss the direction forward. The, I'm sure you've seen the flurry of emails that have gone back and forth. The item is, is that we have commitments that have been made and directions that have been pushed for the Phase Two, that the townships as well as others have committed themselves forward, and from an, we are obligated to participate in that. We've been put on the agenda for that meeting so that we can kind of have an understanding direction forward for, between the commissioners, the council, and the townships, as far as how this program is going to continue.
Okay, I'm with that, but I don't, I mean, we're not obligated to do anything until we actually vote on it.
When I say aye, well, I say the county is, has made an agreement with the townships to fund this, and so, and they are the acting party that moves forward with those, with those activities.
Yeah, I just, I just think this thing's been, these, these funds are a lot, and I'm not making, but they've been out, these COVID funds have been sitting out there for a long time.
I'm 100%.
What you want to do here, Amy?
I mean, as I, I think, as I've said, I think the biggest piece, and I, most of the conversations that I've had with trustees, you know, they aren't looking to us to say, please give us Phase Three either, right, or Round Three. I think they want to be able to get to the point where they have the opportunity to not close out, right, but they need to be able to pay forward those that even came in yesterday, which there are still some, they're going through a more rigorous process on the trustee side. I'm comfortable moving forward with then having further discussion with the commissioners on what their then plan would be with Westfield, Washington, in order for potentially a step, step down program, we'll say.
Well, from there, we made that agreement with the commissioners, too, that no other money moves towards this, this program from any other fund.
Well, the idea is, is that.
After this, I get that.
We're going to have, we're going to have a meeting before our next council meeting, and I believe trustee Tony, you, you can, you'll be trying to participate in that as well, so that we have all three bodies represented, and we have a, a collaboration of what our direction is to move forward, so that we don't have to struggle with this.
With this federal money. Yeah. So we have a motion to approve? A second?
Second.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. With that, I'm going to close the public hearing.
You do.
Did you do, oh, was that seven and eight?
That was seven and eight. Oh, no, eight, eight, eight through 10 was combined with, with the other.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Closing the public hearing?
You can do it, though.
I'm sorry, I'll hit you with it later. Any announcements, starting off with the sheriff?
Yeah, I have a couple of things for you guys. First, our body camera project has been fully implemented through our department. All of our deputies now wearing these body cameras, as well as any special deputy who carries a gun. We're in the process of transitioning from our old in-car camera system to this connected body camera system, so thank you guys for your support on that project, we really appreciate it. Secondly, Elwood Officer Noah Shehanavez was murdered in his vehicle in Elwood on July 31st. Hamilton County law enforcement was able to arrest the accused. He's being currently held and will be held through his trial at the Hamilton County Jail. Also, the visitation for Officer Noah Shehanavez is on Friday from 2:00 to 7:00 at I-Town Church in Fishers, and the funeral is at 11:00 a.m. on Saturday. This officer was a Fishers resident, and a very special place here in Hamilton County for, for this particular hero, so.
Hey.
Yep.
Volume.
I'm sorry. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Sheriff, if somebody, let's call it a news gathering agency, wants to see the film from your body camera, what procedure do they go through to get that?